I'll call this regular council meeting of the village of Graham and Anne to order at 7:30 PM. With us for prayer this evening is Pastor Ruth Fairparker.
Let's pray, Lord, we thank you today for this beautiful day, we thank you for this beautiful island, we thank you for the opportunity to be able to connect with people tonight. We thank you for these people that do a great job, we thank you for bonding. And we pray that together with the council that you would continue to give them wisdom upon wisdom. And Lord, as they delve into whatever it is, even today and in the days that lie ahead, we just thank you and praise you for all that you've done and all that you will do. We give you all the praise, which in your name we pray.
Thank you. I really don't have opening remarks tonight, all I'll say is I hope everybody had a happy holidays and wish everybody a safe and prosperous new year. We've got quite an agenda, so we'll just keep rolling on through and moving on to disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none, item number five is adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting of December 19th, 22.
Make a motion that we adopt the minutes from the meeting of December 19.
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councillor Boyd, question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. For additions to the agenda, I have one motion under 18-2 to transfer 156,587,81 from the general operating fund to the general capital fund. And that needs to be done by electronic transfer. And it's for the reimbursement from DTI for the brush cutting. Because we've been paying it out of the general capital fund and it has to go back to the operating fund. Or from the operating fund to the capital fund. So I'd be looking for a motion to add that to the agenda.
I will make a motion to add that.
Heard the motion from Councillor Told, we have a seconder? Seconded by Councillor Turner, questions? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. Item number seven is the RCMP report.
Should I be speaking into the microphone?
Yeah.
Not that I feel like I need to be that heard or not, but good evening, Madam Mayor and councillors and all those in attendance here in person and online tonight. Just going to give a quick overview of what we were up to in December and also looking back at the last year as a whole now that we're into 2023 now. Looking at December this year, we had 71 files we dealt with. December of last year, we had 51. And last month, we had had a question about our clearance rate. It seemed quite high when we were looking at November and our files being cleared with either charges laid or recommended, I think it was around the 30% mark, which was very high. And so I did look at that for for last month. And it was much more on par with with the RSC as a whole. So looking at last month, we had five files cleared by charges laid or recommended, which is about 7%. And looking at the RSC as a whole was 6%, so it's much more on par with the RSC. Looking at the year as a whole, we had 806 files. And in 2021, we had 715, so a little bit of an increase, not a crazy amount. And I did run the percentages on that just out of curiosity. And so the year as a whole, we were at about 13.5% as charges laid. And looking at the year past, it was 13.7%, so very much the same one year to the next for us here on Graham and Anne. And if I looked at the RSC as a whole for this past year, 2022, it was 9%. So pretty similar, a little bit, we were a little bit higher, but not significantly like it was in November. So I'm going to just continue to watch that as time goes on, just to see if I can make a little bit more sense of it. But and just breaking down our investigations from December, we responded to three reports of assault, four break and enter or unlawfully in a dwelling house, seven mental health calls, two for uttering threats. We had five collisions and eight other traffic reports or tickets, that type of thing. And just to speak a bit about the RCMP over 2022, our staffing levels were a bit up and down through the year. And I think I tried to keep you all apprised of that as we went. We did have some sick leave in there and Constable Roberts and Phil Pot both transferred out in August and September. So when we looked at all of that, there was about eight months of the year where we were working with three officers stationed here on Graham and Anne. We did have other officers coming in for relief work throughout the year. And they were a big help. And I heard many good comments about the work that they were doing and the people who were coming over. I didn't, myself, didn't really have any complaints from anybody about somebody coming over and being rude or not treating the citizens of Graham and Anne well. And so I feel that the detachment did well maintaining our ability to conduct investigations and being proactive even dealing with all those staffing issues throughout the year. We did attend a few events in Red Surge through the year, which is always nice to be able to do that. And we also attended a number of other events going on here. One thing that I find that we do struggle with a little bit for being engaged in the community is a lot of times we get kind of last minute notifications about things going on. And so it's sometimes hard to adjust our schedule or make it out to those things. But we definitely do what we can there. And sometimes it's also hard for us to know when there are events, whether it be sporting events or just community events going on. So the more that people can let us know when there's something going on so that we can stop in and show our face. And we're just trying as much as possible to to be involved in the community and to have positive interactions with the public that we are here to serve. Well, that's kind of my recap on the last year. If there's any questions, I'm more than willing to take them.
Thank you very much, any questions? They're a very quiet bunch. I will say for the last minute invite, that tends to be a Graham and Anne thing, not just an RCMP thing, so.
Yep, fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So item number eight was business arising from the minutes, we have nothing under that. So then we're moving on to number nine, old business, street names, signs, placement, CAO Rayner to speak.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. At the last meeting in December, it was discussed about the placement of street signs. We no longer have access to the same service that we've had previous years. So we were looking to find someone else to do that. But before we did that, council had directed staff to reach out to DTI to make sure that's something that we can actually do. So I had a Zoom meeting with DTI last Wednesday, in that meeting I brought up that same question. So I had an email back from from Mike Rosehart, who's the acting district director, basically saying that as per a task letter by Minister Green dated November 5, 2020, addressed to the municipality of Graham and Anne, the municipality has been given the decision-making authority with respect to traffic operations on road under their administrative and control. However, any decisions for changes in traffic operations will need to be consistent with DTI guidelines and sound engineering. Any changes to DTI standard sign plans would need to be supported by qualified traffic engineering to meet the criteria noted above. Please advise DTI prior to implementing any new signs and all the details with respect in the new layout. So basically, unless we change the traffic signs, as long as we meet their guidelines with the distance from the side of the road with the private lanes with those blue signs, then we're free to do so. We just need to find a contractor to do it.
Thank you, questions or comments? Did we have signs that are waiting to be placed? Do we need to go for, a motion to go forward to have them placed?
We do, we've had a number of signs stolen. For some reason, those blue signs seem to be a hot ticket item. I'm not sure why, but so we have some that need, just the sign needs to be put up. But we've actually have some that the whole four by four post has been taken. So we need to have the posts put back. Maybe we need to open a file, I don't know. But it it does seem funny, but in the in an incident where someone calls 911 and they're looking for a specific location, it, yeah, so we'll we'll try to find someone to put those signs up. Just the sign itself isn't that big a deal, it's the place in the post that we need. Someone more qualified with the equipment.
Councillor Boyd?
I'm guessing it's like any of the other contracts we have, their stipulations have to be met as far as insurance and all that stuff for the contractor doing it.
We have a specific contractor on file that we have all that insurance liability information if we so choose to to use them.
Anyone else? So are we directing staff to go forward with the placement of those signs as per DTI's email?
I'd make a motion to that effect.
You heard the motion from Councillor Boyd, do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, question? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 9-2 is doctor housing, an update? And this is really just a very high level update. This past fall, we had a couple of conversations with Horizon and some different housing potential. And out of that discussion came the need for doctor housing. And there's a piece of property that the Department of Health owns that's across the road from the hospital. Horizon seems very interested in doing something in conjunction with us. And they have hired a consultant to look at the feasibility of placing up to three houses on that piece of property, looking for the size of the lot, water, wetland, all of those things that go with it. I think they were here last month, so this is very preliminary. We've not really talked about ownership of the land, all of those things that would go along with that. But just as sort of an update that this could be coming towards us at some point here in the next little bit. And there does seem to be some legs and some movement on it, so. Any questions or comments on that file? Hearing none, we'll move on to the 10-minute open session. Okay. I think everybody is probably here for the next section, which is delegations and/or special speakers. Item 11.1 is 1191 Route 776, a potential use of the building, Michael Monroe and Lauren Martin to present. This is where I always get really nervous if the technology is going to hold up or not.
I'm sure it'll be fine, it always just takes a moment to get started here. Let's hope. Okay.
Okay, hello, thank you for having us here, we just wanted to make sure, is it working? It is working? Okay, so we've approached council a few times before about the plans that we had to try and revitalize the old Scotiabank building. So start off myself, Mike Monroe, I think a lot of people in the room. We've been at the Grand Isle now for about two years. This is my partner Lauren Martin, if you want to.
Hi, Ron, Lauren, came here, I'm interested to join Mike, of course, but originally from Halifax, was living in Toronto, doing large-scale events and teaching in Harvard College. And then I came here and I really, we're both looking to make sure that we're using our skill set to best serve our community. So, nice to meet all those of you who I haven't had the chance to yet.
So what we have here is the title here, health and wealth, that's two things. I think that with the closure of the Scotiabank, it gives us a unique opportunity. So we wanted to try and use the the space there to build out a bit of a healthcare clinic that do some of the things, not competing with the Graham and Anne Hospital, but things that the Graham and Anne Hospital doesn't do are private services, as well as looking at potential for opening a credit union after the closure of the bank. So everyone's probably familiar with this, the old former Scotiabank building, actually in relatively good shape for its age and about 3,200 square feet and was functional up until a few months ago. So people, if you're familiar with it, that's the top-down view of the current floor plan of what the what the Scotiabank building looked like, with the administrative areas on the right there that most people, if they weren't working there, probably were less familiar with. And then the carpeted area and the blue area and the teller area that most people are probably familiar with. And this is the, we'll get a little further into it, but this is kind of the reimagined space. So the key thing here, I don't know if my pointer will work, is dividing the building essentially down this way. And everything to the to the right there would be part of a new formed Graham and Anne credit union. And everything on this side on the left would be part of an extended healthcare clinic. This is just another top-down schematics and diagrams. So we have the we have the plans in place, we have a builder. So we're going to go walk through kind of how we think we can take this from from here and make it happen. So there's a, there's all the credit unions that exist within Atlantic Canada. And we're hoping that little red circle to add a new one to the map here on our little island. So there's quite a few throughout New Brunswick and Nova Scotia, a little more popular in Nova Scotia than New Brunswick, quite a bit in PEI per capita, not as many in Newfoundland. Personally, I didn't have much of an experience with what a credit union is or how they operated. I know my mom did a lot with with one when we were younger and I didn't really have much awareness. Had a little bit of a difficulty when I was moving to try and get my own business here, operating with Scotiabank because the Glenn and Margaret's business didn't quite color within the lines of what they said a pharmacy was. So my mother said, maybe you should try and reach out to a credit union. After months and months and months of multiple different Big Six banks kind of giving me the runaround, they said, sure, we'd love to have your business, we can have it done in a week. Which is which is remarkable, right? Because they're community-minded and they're really trying to work for their members. When everybody becomes part of a credit union, you are a member. You are an owner, you are part of that organization. So it's not like a standard Big Six bank where there's a board of directors, shareholders, and everybody else is kind of, everything centrally controlled. Everybody has a little bit of a say of how it how it works and how it operates. Personally, just speaking with the one that we were with, Bayview Credit Union, we had quite a great experience. Anytime we had an issue, we have someone local we can call up, we have a friendly face. And they they'll walk us through and fix the problems and doesn't necessarily have to go further than that. So why do we think a credit union would be a viable option? Well, unfortunately, we lost the we lost the bank and there's several members in the the audience who worked at the former bank. It's not due to lack of of talent of the people who were working there. It was, as you know, when you get to bigger organizations, it becomes a Toronto decision or an Ottawa decision. And if it doesn't quite color within the lines, it's done. So it's unlikely where, we've courted several, I think, as a community, it's unlikely a Big Six bank will come back. But a credit union could work for us. So the idea with them is each credit union is a little bit different. It works on trying to give, tailor what it offers to the community. A big thing that's unique about a credit union as well is the outreach. So whereas Big Six bank might be a little bit less community-minded, or when they do, it's to score PR points. The, a credit union has to have a community development plan. And you really want to reach out and and work with the community that you're a part of and figure out how you can work within there and assist it as as that. So to be part of a credit union, everybody has to purchase a share. It's essentially like a membership, a buy-in to to a credit union. And normally they have a nominal fee, anywhere from $5, $25, it all varies depending on the credit union. And that entitles you to a little piece of the pie, a little bit of the profits, a little bit of the operations of the credit union. People can choose to invest larger amounts in that, or people can stay with just their member share. For example, at Bayview, personally and corporately, I had to purchase a $5 share in Bayview, based off the year they had, I probably should have done more with that, but I didn't, I just got the one share. And so, you know, I might get a couple pennies based off the years of operation. And those members select and set up a board of directors, which helps guide the CEO, helps guide other individuals and steering the organization to work for its community. So how does it work or why is it a little bit different? So it's voluntary, open membership, anyone can become a part of it, anyone can join. Everybody has a say how it works. It's kind of got that democratic control to it. It's not a hedge fund or a large group that owns a vast majority of the shares and BlackRock or someone else controlling how everything works. So there's a local autonomy. So in my situation, the local person I worked with Scotiabank liked the Glenn and Margaret's business, they were very happy. It was going to be a very quick thing. It got kicked to Halifax, it was fine, it got kicked to Toronto, and for some reason, they didn't like our island. And or they thought the pharmacy wasn't a pharmacy. So having that local and have things only go as far as St. John or Fredericton or Grand Harbour for decisions makes it a little bit easier to try and be involved in what happens. And the the big thing is the community involvement. So it it wants to be, it wants to work for the people who you're set up for. Because it's your neighbors, it's your it's your others, your your family that's part of it. And that's how you, how a credit union is supposed to operate. I'm sure people's thought is, how does it work, is it safe? If I was putting my money somewhere, I know when I put money in Scotiabank, it's controlled by the Canadian Deposit Insurance Corporation, a certain amount of my funds, I think up to $100,000 is covered there if Scotiabank made some risky maneuvers and went under. With a credit union, they actually have a higher personal threshold. So credit unions, they're underwritten or guaranteed by each province. Each province has its own setup and guidelines. So in New Brunswick, it's the the New Brunswick Credit Union Deposit Insurance Corporation, mouthful. And each type of qualified account up to a certain threshold, the the funds are guaranteed. So if for whatever reason the credit union made risky type of investments and it lost solvency, people, as long as you had in each specified account less than $250,000, you would be, it'd be underwritten by the provincial government, you wouldn't lose your your life savings. So a little bit of a of a network of how they, how credit unions work, I'm just going to try and go through a little bit. So the Financial and Consumers Service Commission, that is the government entity that sets up and controls and through the act is empowered to write regulations and decide how a credit union is set up, how it'll work, the standards it has to adhere to. There's, like I mentioned before, the Deposit Insurance Corporation that makes sure everyone pays in, like insurance, they pay insurance premiums based on how much money is in their credit union to guarantee that money. And then there's Atlantic Central, so the Atlantic Canadian Credit Union. So rather than each, the four provinces, Atlantic Canada formed together. And rather than each trying to come up with their own computer system, their own app, their own whatever, everybody pooled together in those four provinces and a set of systems and performas and guidelines and loan documents and things were put in place to make it a little easier to set up and operate. So you're not starting completely from square one. You have to individualize what you do. And there's examples of some that people may have heard of in New Brunswick, some of the the two larger ones, Bayview, which was now merged and known as Brunswick Credit Union, the biggest one in the province, and UniFinancial, which is a national credit union as opposed to a provincial credit union. But it has a big footprint, particularly in the Acadian Peninsula. So what do we want to do initially? So we know if we try and go too much, too fast, that's when you you have a lot of risk. So we want to give people the idea, the ability to do basic banking here. So everything doesn't have to be a 12-hour ferry back and forth and a full day's worth of work to go to to the nearest branch and then have them cancel on you and all the costs that that ensue with that, I've heard some horror stories of people. So basic personal checking, personal savings, business checking, business savings, and some basic financial instruments, GICs, TFSAs, RSPs, a low degree of loaning. And the reason for that is because credit unions are required to have a certain amount of capital. They call it their regulatory capital based off what you do. So if you're offering big business loans and big mortgages, we have to have big reserves. And it's, this is being started with local, local people here with modest means. And we're not, we're not going to be able to do that until enough comes underneath the umbrella to make it happen. So some of the things, term deposits, you know, being able to withdraw and deposit cash, cash a check, do a coin order, currency exchange, talk to a representative to figure out what's going on, and use some of the 3,700 network of ATMs from the credit unions that, so you're not hit with an ATM fee all the time. So what we'd like to get into in the future, either in facilitation with somebody else or on our own, depending on the 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 speed at which it grows, doing some loans, some mortgages, some insurance, some basic credit cards and some more financial and insurance instruments. But that will not be a part of our initial kind of goal. So kind of have a little bit of a detailed video and walkthrough of the space and we're going to kind of just go on a little tour here. I'm just going to, we're in the top-down looking at the building. And like I said, this area over is a credit union. And we're just going to kind of walk through kind of what we had in mind. So the goal with a lot of this is everything you change is time and cost and money and construction. So 3,200 square feet of building and we tried to fight with it as little as we could and just try and utilize it based off what's already in place. So here, just changing the long row of five tellers and have a little L-stage section with some big privacy barriers, there are sound-dating material to give a little bit more separation from you and your neighbor's account. And then also having some filing area here. In the back, we have a new office, we're adding in where the kitchen area was. It's about 300 square feet and with two to three employees there, there's enough for a beaster table and all the other areas just by putting it in a linear kind of kitchen model. Another area that we could have for a small office or workspace. And in the back here, that was some filing and storage, an area that is more soundproofed, that you could have, when we get into some more private financial instruments, that you could go back and to someone and talk to an advisor. So the, this part, probably new, is the addition of that door and turning this into a little bit of a workspace. And I think that's all I wanted to show with that. So just a little bit of a recap of where we get, I know word travels fast on the island, they say, but not always very accurate. So we're trying to show what happened and where we're at. So we, sitting here in the financial services, Graham and Anne Economics Committee, we're all kind of scratching our head, figuring out what we could do to try and make things work. And there were some good workarounds and some good discussions. But with the amount of businesses and the amount of people on this island, you know, several people, myself, we're talking, we could pull something together and come up with a local solution. Because there's enough businesses here to to make something work. So I went to one of those, for the first time in my life, one of those political events. I went and the premier was having a dinner, bought a very expensive dinner plate and cornered the premier and talked his ear off about Graham and Anne and the fact that we were struggling to go away for healthcare services and we now just lost a financial institution. And thinking he would give me the old shake and brush me off, the next thing he did is grab his chief of staff and set up a meeting. So I think they're very interested in wanting to help and at least not put up roadblocks. So then we met with council on the, in October. We did a walkthrough with the CAO as well as the building inspector and took a look at the building and the space. Met with the local MLA and talked about a follow-up meeting with the close session with the with the council about a letter of support from the village, trying to get a lease in place prior to that meeting with the premier. to get a lease in place uh prior to that meeting with the premier at the premier's office in October. Again, there was another one of those uh those meetings there that was the annual general meeting for the for the province. So we went there and cornered, I think, every minister and again talked their ear off about Graham and Anne and here's what we were doing, here's what we needed, how can you help? And as well as talking to uh someone from the senate. Um, I'll just do a quick sigh here, Jim Jim Quinn, the senator from New Brunswick. Uh, we met with the with one of his, one of his members, one of his staff members, and they went through the process of getting a comparable island in British Columbia set up as a rural remote community. And I really think that's something that we should collectively push to try and do because that will have all kinds of implications to help with healthcare delivery under the Canada Health Act. It will help with um taxes for when people travel. There's all kinds of things that we are sister communities and the fact that we're an island with a comparable population separated by a ferry and that's the only way they're back. Uh, so uh silly enough, the village gave us the keys. So we went through and tried to bring every sort of um provider through and take a look at all of the different things that needed to be updated or brought to uh brought to standard to make it to make it work. So a lot of the local providers on the island. Um, we briefed with the Rotary as well as found a general contractor with Mike Park, Breakfast Retreats, and are working through, uh you saw some of the design work was done, finishing up a business plan, a financial performa, as well as looking through the Regional Development Council, the Regional Development Corporation to try and get some some grants, some provincial funding to make this happen. So luckily, the community kind of jumped behind it. We went through just the friends and family and friends of family uh network to try and do. The minimum requirement is to have at least ten people form a credit union, you need at least five hundred thousand dollars of pooled initial funds. And uh obviously, the more that that comes into the fold, the faster you can do things and the more services you can offer, but we we've achieved that. And uh um there's still a lot to do going forward. I'm not gonna probably bore everyone with every single step. This will be there if people want to, but this is the beginning of the process. It's not the end of the process. There's still quite a bit to do to get sign off from the province, to get approval, to train staff, to have forms, to have processes. I don't want to give anyone, oh, there's gonna be a credit union there tomorrow. That's we're we're still we're still many months out from that being able to happen. But we're working through the the process pretty diligently. And these are all the regulatory requirements right from the FCMB side. So like I said, there's a lot to a lot of work to do to make this happen, just like, you know, raising something up. It really takes a village. We've got twenty-six hundred people on this island, give or take. And if the critical mass to make this be able to stick and happen is you need about half to look to try and come on board and at least a quarter of the businesses to come on board to make this happen. Um, like I said, we'll we'll give it a try and I don't want it to be that didn't didn't work through lack of effort, but uh we'll uh we'll do everything we can to make it work. So people are probably are hopefully looking, saying, okay, well, that sounds all good. Now what can you do? Um, so we need to, we have ten people, but we would require anyone else who's interested to come on board and be part of that initial investment cadre. Um, mention to your friends, to your uh your your neighbors, your loved ones, whoever else you want to. Send us a letter or an email that you want to commit to join as a member. We have Facebook groups, email updates going out. And uh basically want to try and see that we can start to get some of that critical capacity to make this happen. So that's a contact information and we'll probably make all this the slideshow available so people can take a look on their own time. And then we'll go a little quick. So the uh the process to to make it happen, the whole idea, it a credit union is a co-op. It it works and operates under the cooperative model. So it's money from one neighbor going to fund the business of another neighbor, essentially. And through that, you're creating that community resiliency, you're growing those relationships. So it's 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 kind of people in the community helping each other and each other's businesses grow. Um, so that's a list of initial people who kind of who kind of reached out. It is by no means exhaustive and if anyone sees this and says, hey, I wasn't approached, it's because I'm new, I don't know many people and I didn't want to didn't want to put something out there and give people thought or hope until I thought it had a reasonable likelihood of success. So now that we're approaching that reasonable likelihood of happening, anyone can reach out and drop a line and happy to meet with you and and give you more of the particulars as opposed to the overview. I don't know if I'm gonna make it make everyone go through this, but there's all kinds of great great reasons to to grow and invest locally. Tried to do everything we could here locally over the over the holidays and it it really felt good as opposed to Costco's got enough money, Shoppers got enough money, so. But but our neighbors in Graham and Anne who have a small business, it might make a difference to them, right? Yeah.
Okay, and so I'm gonna tell you a little bit about the other side of the building, what we're looking to do in order to help bring some extended healthcare services here to Graham and Anne and what that would look like um for services. So essentially, the 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 healthcare portion is to bring new services that aren't currently available through our hospital um or anywhere else on the island. And they look like this. So we have teledent and telehealth services. Um, so bringing on a dental hygienist who would be able to do uh cleaning, um scaling those different types of uh services here on the island, having triaging for uh dentists that may be located on the mainland but may be able to to help make sure that if you're if you know, if you're okay here for a couple weeks, great, but if you have to get into appointment the next day, we make that happen. Um, telehealth services, same thing, offering uh connections with doctors uh both here on the mainland uh through virtual appointments and rotational local physicians. So uh bringing in specialists um into the space to be able to have those one-on-one intimate conversations um in a clinical space. So in addition to that, we also have a fantastic lineup of practitioners who have already signed on to support us and come here on a rotational basis. Uh, we know that Graham and Anne might not be able to support all of these individuals on a full-time basis, so we want to make sure that um we're allowing that access for our community members and that we're also uh providing practitioners with the opportunity to come here to see how beautiful this island is, um to meet our community and to garner a bit of a a patient load here uh at home. So um we have physiotherapy, osteopathy, athletic therapy, acupuncture, photobiomy, uh massage therapy, nursing services, and medical aesthetics already signed up. And we are looking for the following optometry. So if you have any um, you know, friends, family members, or someone who you know on, whether it be here or on the mainland, who has any of the specialized training, please let us know because we are looking for um some of these practitioners to join our team. Uh, audiologist, chiropractor, and full-time dental hygienist, as we do feel the need is there um on on the dentist's side since we did lose our dentist a couple years ago. Okay, so in addition to having a rotation of practitioners come in, we're also looking to offer uh one-on-one um mental health workshops, hypertension, diabetes clinics, and other adjunctive therapies. And finally, um, we know that we may not have a practitioner here um on a everyday basis, so in order to make sure that we can maintain a great overall health of our community, um, how can we have supplementary, non-practitioner-based services? Um, so this here, we can offer relaxation massage, lymphatic drainage, facials, infrared, sauna, and cold plunge therapy, uh relay therapy, chroma therapy, and amp coil therapy, all fantastic at developing your health and and kind of moving you in the right direction. Um, we obviously are a fishing community. There are a lot of people who are a little bit hard on their bodies. Um, so how can we, uh, you know, keep everybody in great shape through the entire year? So um they're back at it and uh they're already warmed up. Um, so essentially, we're looking to um take what would be ten, twenty uh members of the community who would typically go over to see a practitioner on a day-to-day basis um and instead bring a practitioner here, to our home. So the benefits, obviously no downtime, no requirement for travel. I know it's challenging and even within the community, everyone's really close with their families, so taking off days even just to take your mom to an appointment um over on the mainland can be quite taxing. So how do we make it as easy as possible and as accessible as possible for our community? And keeping the cost down, um, because we also know that taking the ferry back and forth, it can really add up if you're going to a lot of different appointments. So how can we make this a a community-friendly space to come? Um, and so membership and facility fees. So um an application of facility and member fees uh would be in addition to your typical service fee, however, again, we'd look to make sure that those fees are less than what you would have to pay if you went off the island. And then this is a video of the other side. I mean, I know that we have a pretty um top-full agenda, so I might just give it a moment, but as you can see here, we're going to the reception area. Um, from an overview, we will look to have uh a few practitioner rooms here on the left. Um, that would be three practitioner rooms, two full clinical um rooms and one one-on-one practitioner room in the back, uh a room that would be able to service um dental work and optometry. And then in the additional space right next to the washroom here, um, we'd look to have a larger infrared sauna, which, again, one of those um non-practitioner-required services that would be available year-round. So the essence of time. Progress to date, so this is actually an idea that we had discussed last year. Um, we were looking to see if we could to could permit something like this to happen down at the Grand Isle Drugstore. Uh, and with space limitations and once we did a walkthrough, Chris, I know that you were there with us from Manza, and we were looking at how we could possibly build on the property or implement something, it was a little bit too challenging. So uh this was of in our mind a perfect fit um to be able to move forward. So again, we went through um quite extensive meetings and through this this past fall to garner additional support um and to make sure that we were heading in the right direction, um making sure that we have our practitioners and have not only provincial and federal support, support from our village. Um, and hopefully, as soon as we're able to uh continue to share details with the community, support from our community as well. And again, just within the last month, um drafting and finalizing some of the different details for the business plan, two-year financial performa, um and Regional Development Corporation working with them to see how we may be able to garner provincial funding to support with some of the larger renovations uh that would take place upfront. We feel very confident that uh we can garner our community behind us for both the credit union and the health clinic, uh but it's just the boost of that those first renovations that can be a little bit challenging or cumbersome. Okay, so our path forward, and as Mike mentioned, uh with the credit union, same thing with the health clinic, we do have some work to do. Uh, fortunately, when it comes to timeline, um, we're looking to do a bit of a phase opening and would likely be able to earmark that uh going into late spring, early summer, um if we can get some of these renovations completed. Um, with the exception of having our universal washroom set up at that time and still utilizing the previous bank uh washroom for access. And again, uh reinforcing the wall, creating that separation for the credit union uh and the healthcare clinic set of things. Um, that's that timeframe is still to be determined. Uh, we'll continue to keep everyone updated through the Facebook group and through email updates. Uh, so we highly encourage you to follow and again, we will reshare those following the meeting. And finally, had a support on this and um committing to uh being a part of, you know, this growth uh for healthcare in our community, uh joining us for email updates or just even telling your friends and family about it is extremely helpful. Um, that word of mouth garnering that support is really important to us, especially in initial phases, making sure that this is something that we can execute and do so with the best quality possible. Okay. As Mike may have mentioned, we also we support local as much as we can. Um, so we've gone through for a few different uh walkthroughs of the space, no problem at all. Uh, if you didn't walk through the space, uh and we're looking to use local vendors and contractors, but if again, if you have any local recommendations, you've worked with someone or have someone in your family um and would like to put them forward, we're happy to accept uh your recommendations and look into it because we do want this to best serve our community in all aspects. And as a final point, as I know you had mentioned that um Horizon was looking for accommodations specifically for our doctors here on site, we're also looking to make sure that we have something, something a little bit smaller, more of a mobile or a tiny home in size, but something that would allow for uh access for any of our practitioners who are here on a rotational basis. Fortunately, we have a very high tourism season and everything books up, but we do need that access uh accessibility to make sure that we can continue with those rotations. So just utilizing um here, this is the the bank area here. Um, just using this area here to create uh one to two residential um interim spaces where we'll be able to have rotational practitioners come and stay for that short period of time. And these are just kind of drawings of functionally what that might look like. So, um, finally, we have some requests for council.
So yeah, I know in the the council's previous business plan, they had um earmarked some funds for a bonded employee to work through the village. So it would be our request or suggestion um to re-task that the earmarked funds in order to go into some some sort of um lead up to this because there's going to be a lot of preparing documents, forms, uh getting stuff ready. So that'll be one of our asks. If there's some of those already in place, um, it'll help us get open earlier and the earlier we're open, the the less time theoretically the village would need a a bonded navigator. Um, there's a lot of uh accounting and legal risks starting this off and for myself and the nine other um initial cadre and whoever else joins. Um, it it really is, I think, something for the community and for the village, um so looking to for some sort of risk or cost sharing. So if we go through this process and for whatever reason, although they seem supportive, the province shoots us down, the the accountants and lawyers, they still like to get paid. Um, so not having all of that bore on on the on our group. Um, requests for village assistance with messaging, um the Boindapp, the Facebook platform, and uh um formalizing some of the stuff that was verbally agreed to in in the lease, again, our our accountants and lawyers, your accountants and lawyers. Help, um, obviously coming with the voice of council, going to the province and looking for something from RBC and and bending people's ear when they come to the island will always be very helpful if something's in front of Minister uh President Savois' desk at RBC and they are doing a site visit. Maybe, hey, you know, how's the how's that application doing for the credit union and health center? Uh, help with the liaison with any of the the services, the planning department, the fire, uh plumbing, electrical inspectors. Haven't built um too much, renovated a a place for ourselves, but haven't started anything to this scale and uh help navigate and that would be would be greatly greatly appreciated. And making sure the rural plan and what we're doing is in sync, and I think that's already uh been in place. And assistance if we come up short with our applications and the province doesn't give us what we need, um, some uh some volunteer calls to action, some fundraising through the community to to kind of make this to get out the door and to have a likelihood of success.
That was everything.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I think we have to say thank you. Um, we, this has been very hard not to talk about this for the last couple months, I have to say. And as the questions have started coming up more and more frequently, it's really good to have this out publicly. Um, I think the community support piece, which we've talked about, is gonna be key and I think I I'm hopeful. I think if one thing we've learned over the last year is the importance of having local community financial services. And I think this is a good opportunity for people to, you know, step forward and say, I recognize this is important and I'm willing to support it. And I I think you'll get that support, so. Um, yeah, as far as the ask, we had a quick conversation about this at lunchtime and I think it makes sense to table those, we'll take it back. Make sure we're meeting our agreement that we when we received the building, that we're we're not doing anything there. But I think it's, I, you know, we've said that we support in principle and I don't really see that changing from anybody around the table. So we'll see what we can do without signing on for everything right off the bat. So with that, that was a lot of words. Does anybody else have any questions or comments around the table?
I'd just say thank you. All your work and dedication, just to hear the passion in your voice for Graham and
All your work and dedication, just to hear the passion in your voice for Gram and Anne, it's really appreciated.
So, I know we're new, our roots aren't as deep as everyone else in this room, but they're going to go deeper and we're going to get following away, right?
I think you've answered all of our questions.
Perfect.
Yes, thank you very much. If you have some of that information, I think we can start sharing it out on our Facebook page. If you just send us the links, we'll go from there. And then maybe we can sit down, once things settle down here in the next little bit, let's set up a time and we'll sit down and have a conversation.
Sounds fantastic.
Okay. Thank you guys very much. Okay. I'll give you guys a minute to get settled, and then we'll move on to eleven-two, which is Gram and Anne Tourism. You guys are all so much better at technology than I am. I'm a little jealous, I've got to say.
We are here being Gram and Anne Island Tourism. And I'm myself, Kim, Patsy, Jennifer, and Ashley.
First and foremost, we are here tonight to extend our appreciation to the village of Gram and Anne for your support of our organization. We are humbled by your generosity and assistance as we continue to work towards our goals and aspirations for the future of tourism on Gram and Anne. Thank you.
We are also here tonight to give you and the many islanders watching this broadcast an update on the happenings of 2022 with your very own Gram and Anne Island Tourism Group.
In early spring last year, we were awarded from ACOA for our grant themed Discover Main Street. We were happy to say that we were awarded $69,100 to put towards tourism initiatives. Many of the items we're going to explain below, and some of them are still work in process. Please note, if you have any expertise and if you want to share in helping us, we encourage you to reach out to us. We like teamwork. So far, we spent about $42,000. We have $27,000 left to spend. We're going to put $20,000 towards flyers, the maps that we sent out last year, we're going to update it, and posters and signs to help out with the different events, like the Canada Day events and the Island Fest events. And the deadline for us to spend this money is March 31st, so we got to get on that. So, some of the projects that we did, we assisted with marketing and content creation for the Island Fest and for Island Fest first. It was the first Island Fest activity for the island. It was a huge hit, and it was so great to see everyone out and enjoying the weekend. We're looking forward to assisting further with the Arts and Culture Committee of the village on this festival in coming years and watching the celebrations grow. On Canada Day, we hosted the sand castle building contest at the Seal Cove Sand Beach. We judged and awarded prizes to the winners in collaboration with the village. And we gave all the participants, the ones, anybody that was involved, some bubbles to enjoy the rest of the day.
Yep, Kim.
Sorry, I'm back. We then created and held the first annual lobster family fun day. We had so much fun. I know for myself, I couldn't really like see beyond about five feet around me because it was just go, go, go. But we had about, we had over 200 people attend. And we were able to make a really great donation to the Gram and Anne Food Bank because of that. And we also awarded a door prize, which was won by J.D. Gutt. And we have a video to show you that recaps the day and really just shows how much fun everybody had and what a beautiful day it was.
No sound, but you can enjoy it. The sound complements it really well. It's really too bad about the sound because the music really went quite nicely with that. But that gives you a recap of that fun day and a little teaser for what is coming next. I hope that you agree that the video was done really well. And we hired and contracted out to Ardoor Visual, who is here on the island and partners of these fine folks here. So, we're excited to have them on board.
We recently did the Christmas tree lighting, just right outside the village doors here. We had an ornament decorating table for the kids where they could create and design an ornament and hang it from the tree. We had a number of cookie donations, lots of volunteers contributed to that. About 40 or 50 people arrived when it was lit. And as here, we have an idea for more exciting event, so stay tuned. And we have further plans for the fall.
We also entered a float into this year's Christmas parade. So, many of you and others reached out to suit up inflatable lobster suits and walk with us. Two volunteers even brought their own decorated golf court to accompany us. Our float won second prize and the cart won as well. We were able to light off fireworks for the event as the parade floats came in to the community center.
We were also able to offer financial assistance with the backyard music festival, namely their tent rental and the fireworks.
You're next, Kim.
I know, sorry. I do apologize for being in the box. So, prior to our ACOA funding, we had procured the rights to an older information map of Gram and Anne. The map, the back of the map provides guests coming to the island with information on the island's unique floor and fauna. So, it covers rocks, it covers whales, covers birds, and a bunch of other things. So, what it very specifically does not have is business information. It's been a really sticky topic amongst, well, everybody. But we really thought long and hard about it, and we discussed it over a bunch of meetings, both publicly and amongst ourselves. And we did check in with a number of different stakeholders. But we determined that it was in our best financial interest to not print business information on those maps. What we will do is add a QR code that will point to our website, which is sort of the main purpose we're here. And we will get to that in a few. And, sorry, so with that in mind, we are planning on making a couple of changes to the map. And if there is anything that comes to mind that was missing on it that you would like to see added, one of the things that we are already looking at is sort of community intercepts. So, like a blow up of North Head Grand Harvest Seal Cove. We would like to add picnic areas, possibly public restrooms, that type of information. And I, Patsy, we're over to you.
The ACOA funding also provided us with the opportunity to implement a new and improved interactive website in the island business directory. We are excited to show you a preview of our new and improved website tonight. We hope that the village would like to link with our website and us with theirs, and we can connect. We would also be able to, we also want to be able to connect to a recreational calendar and events page, which will feature the activities and events of the community year-round.
I don't know if you guys are taking a minute to read these things. We're really excited about this website. It's something we've been working on for a while, and it looks great on a mobile as well. So, and it's easy to use. You just click on the, you know, the tabs, the stay tab, the play tab, the eat tab. I will just look here, and you can see that quaint cafes, delicious treats. I think we can click back here, we got, sorry. I've gone through the tabs at the top, so. Places to stay, a few of us, this is still, I guess, kind of password-protected, the website so far, but we just need to add just a couple more actual businesses to be able to make it go live. So, we're hoping to actually have that done by tomorrow. So, I talked to two businesses today, and they're game to be on here. So, the really cool thing about this is you, I mean, obviously, you put your picture on and that. And we'll just take my cottage for an example. I can go book now, and it automatically takes me to Airbnb. I think that's the coolest thing because I'm not very techie. That's just great. So, oh, sorry, yeah. You know, and then, of course, they can look further. I don't know that my, you know, first picture to entice them to go in was the best one, but, you know, just to try to test it out, it's probably pretty cool. So, there's that. And so, there's eat, obviously, we want to go there. We really want to have these places to eat on here because knowing, if you've ever gone to TripAdvisor and checked out Gram and Anne, that's the downfall, is places to eat and their hours and things like that. But we need a few more people, so we're going to go ahead and get them on board. We are accepting memberships now for them to be front and center on our website, and this will be the one and only website coming through. So, you can see, you just click through to Newton's, and I'm sure that they're going to be adding some really great updates and things as they go forward as well with their business ventures. And you'll see play, which is, I think there's lots of fun things to do here. We've got the e-bike rentals, Pediscope Arts, Wallertail Lighthouse. And again, we can just learn more and click right on. We have Ashley's Business, Lambert Family Adventures, and Jeep Tours. So, we're hoping to get those kicked off this summer as well. This website should be, I mean, it's pretty easy to go through and see what's happening. The tourists will be, like with the SEOs and all of that, should just be able to come on the Google page, the first one that they see. We bought a ton of domains, so if someone's just, you know, typing in gramandanne.com, well, we bought that domain and many others. So, you know, we've kind of monopolized Gram and Anne in our tourism webpage here. So, upcoming events, we want to be able to add Island Fest. We want to be able to add, we briefly spoke about an email, or there was an email come through about a festival happening in the next couple of months, maybe a winter festival? Yeah. I apologize, we've been busy with some other things, getting this stuff going, but I did see the email. So, I mean, this would be the spot to put that. And, I mean, the future would be to link the community calendar, you know, potentially, you know, just to be able to have a place where the community and tourists and visitors can go and know what's what. So, getting here, we're really hoping to eventually do some like all-inclusive packages and things like that. So, we've got coastal transport here, we have Atlantic charters, you know. When you scroll down through, we can connect to their websites, direct bookings and things like that. And of course, the contact us information. And we're also looking at having like a members section. Patsy spoke with our designer this morning, and it seems like it's going to be pretty streamlined. So, that's really exciting. We're happy and can't wait to get this launched. So, the funding allocated via ACOA led to our progress on many of these projects. But to stem from our original goal of planning a fun experience for island visitors, so you might have all known about the ticket to fun, the Gram and Anne experience that we took on this summer. While the funding came in later than we would have hoped, it did allow us to test out the program. So, we look forward to your feedback as members, including business locations and maybe even as participants. The ticket to fun contest was short but mighty, a mighty success, and we plan to run the program again for the full 2023 season, so we're excited about that.
If you follow our Facebook and Instagram pages, Gram and Anne Island Tourism, to keep you in the know about events and activities, as we kind of mentioned on our website, we post there frequently. If there's something you'd like us to promote, please reach out to us, and we'll try our best to help. And like our Facebook page, make it easiest for you to tag your businesses and things like that when the opportunity arises.
And as we move into the new year, we will continue to work on a number of projects again, as we're going to state.
Yes.
Okay, I'm up again. Okay. We have some funding to put towards heritage buildings. So, now, this isn't, this is sort of Gram and Anne Island Tourism official heritage, not necessarily heritage heritage. And we're looking for input. We'd like to choose five different building locations that are worthy, that we feel are worthy of the, we being like, you know, everybody, of sort of getting information and sign and markers. Like examples would be like, Newton's is already doing it really well, but that Newton's building has been around for ages. The old lighthouse building. We were wondering about the history of Grand Isle Guardian Building. We're aware that some work's been done on similar projects in the past, and we would love to speak to anyone who knows more about the past projects and if anyone is interested in helping out.
We are currently in the midst of producing a tourism video to promote Gram and Anne Island as a premium all-season destination. As you all know out there, there's just a tidbit of snow, and I think that we can really let people know that, and they can come stay with us and enjoy what we enjoy year-round here. So, the video will be promoted on several social media channels, featured on the coastal transport ferries, and displayed in the visitor information center. It will be highlighted on Tourism New Brunswick's media outlets, and we are looking at purchasing a media buy-in to be showcased on popular TV channels. We want our new and current GMIT members to have the opportunity to be featured in this video, and you just simply email us to let us know of your consent and expression of interest. We don't want you to miss out on this opportunity, so let people know. If you want your business involved, we would love to be able to at least showcase it a little bit in that video. We wanted to have a deadline for interest for that, so we can get everything buttoned up and ready to go to be able to start that video on those channels in the early spring. So, the interest, if you want to be in the video and be included, is January 31st. In December, we met with the In December, we met with the owners of Coastal Transport through, through the very, sorry, we met with Coastal Transport. I was in the meeting with them for a couple hours, and we had some great chats about their gift shop on the ferry, and they were basically offered to Graham and Anne Island Tourism as a potential opportunity to host a, like, ad hoc, VIC cooperative gift shop, whatever that might look like. These are some things that are really in the beginning stages. We'll be discussing this opportunity with the Village of Graham and Anne Council in February, hopefully. We've put the, the request out to maybe chat more about that. Any thoughts, concerns, questions, please direct them to us, so that we can bring forth this in those initial meetings. There's some other exciting things coming up, and we're just about done, but, the 3D map update, I don't know if, oh, sorry, it's not very nice to look at. Okay, sorry. Oh, goodness, the 3D map update. So, in partnership with Daven St. Pierre and Matt Bork of My Property Tour.ca, we've talked about this in a few meetings previous to this, this, Matt Bork actually created a, an app for UDM, so the University of Moncton, to be able to show their campus kind of on a 3D, much like Mike and Lauren's pictures, their 3D images, can scan over, there might be a little highlight or a pinpoint, and it will bring up either a video with some content down below, or a really nice picture of what's located in that building, how you get there, what's, you know, just the ins and outs of all of that. So, we were approached last year this time, I think, for our first meetings with these guys. Josh McLeod was a part of that as well. He's been on the island here and there fishing and things, so, anyway, there's a team of these guys, and they're real techie, and they like to do this kind of thing. So, they approached us, and we are working together with them. They put together a proposal for the Environmental Trust Fund to be able to make an app of Graham and Anne, so we'll have the whole island, the outer islands, and we're hoping that, you know, there will be pinpoints, and you can hover over these ecologically sensitive areas. We have a lot of really unique flora and fauna, things I never even knew existed until I talked with some of the people who are going to be partnering with, moving forward with this, and I think it's a really unique opportunity for people to come here and, you know, download their app on the ferry, and then they can just be guided around and, and see all these neat things. Maybe they can get to the location, maybe they can't, but the app shows them what is at that location and how to protect it, or what we're doing as, as a community to be able to protect as well. So, the app would feature ecologically sensitive areas and preservation information about the locations, and we can aim for content in the future to include villages and businesses. And this app and website will be something that is evolving and updating as we continue to grow. This is an area we could use input for areas that are sensitive, contacts for further information and that as well, so.
We also have an application in to New Brunswick Tourism Partnership Grant for social and media content creation and website development. Both of these will provide benefic, prove, sorry, both of these will prove beneficial as our internet visibility increases. With all our new interactive website, we'll eventually provide the all-inclusive booking opportunity. Island visitors will be able to book their ferry and flight, or flight combinations and unique experiences all in one location. Our business directory mentioned above will allow visitors to, to the website, the opportunity to have a direct link to, to your website or Facebook page, business page. If you are not a member, these increased, this increased business opportunity may not exist for you. Consider joining Graham and Anne Island Tourism. Our memberships are very affordable, and as you can see, they really pack a punch with the opportunity to promote your business.
We just received an email this morning, so I'm happy to announce that we've received the email from Allison Atton from Tourism Heritage and Culture New Brunswick, confirming a partnership with Tourism New Brunswick for these initiatives Patsey's just talked about, so, we're excited. Kim, again.
Okay, this is the last one for me. We, well, hopefully you will agree that we've been up to some pretty exciting things, and we really look forward to working with everybody moving forward for this coming season. We're really thrilled to be moving into the new year and look forward to seeing you when we open back up our public meetings again in the beginning of March. We're going to continue with the first Thursday of every month, and please stay tuned on our Facebook page, and Graham and Anne Island Tourism will be announcing any special announcements coming up for us on the event, and any other exciting work that we're working on. And please, if you have any questions, thoughts, ideas, criticisms, anything, just please reach out to us. We are happy to talk about anything.
Finally, we'd like to thank you all for joining us on this adventure, for volunteering when you've been able, and reaching out when you've had questions, comments, or concerns. We all love this little island of ours, and we know that working together will be able to show it off to the world, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Okay, now that we're all awake from the lights, I do, I do think that we want to say thank you. I think it's noticeable how much effort has gone into tourism over the past year, and I know that there were some growing pains in getting your feet under you, but I think it, it certainly showed what can be done, and we really look forward to seeing what's happening in the next year, so, so, thank you very much. Okay. If everybody's eyes have adjusted to the blinding light, we'll move on to correspondence. Maple Grove Cemetery, Letter of Resignation CAO Chris Rayner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In the package, you all have a copy of three letters. Because of the time and a long list of stuff yet to come, I'm not going to bother reading all of that, but I did feel that the first letter warranted being read from Phil Els, basically saying, "As of 1968, the village council, under the direction of Mayor Beulah Griffin, Harry Stanley, and Ross Russell, appointed me to the cemetery supervisor and superintendent over Northhead Cemetery. From there, I seem to fall into that position over all the cemeteries. At this time, due to circumstances in my time served, I wish to advise you that as of December 30th, 2022, I am resigning of the duties that I have fulfilled representing the position from Graham and Anne. At this time, I would like to thank you for your responsibility and trust it in me, and wish you a successful future to setting up a Graham and Anne Cemetery Association and Working Board to oversee the maintaining, the respect of our relatives and forefathers on Graham and Anne." The other two on the back page was basically just, as the first line says, was a heads-up to, to Mayor Morse about what was coming. The top page was the official letter from the Maple Grove Cemetery Limited that went out to all the shareholders, basically saying, you know, the same thing as Phil, you know, they, no one can find volunteers anymore as a board, they're tired, just like a lot of boards, and this is their official letter of resignation from Maple Grove Cemetery. As of December 31st, 2022, the management and board of Maple Grove will be retiring and handing it over to the village council. I believe in closed session, we have an opportunity to discuss the cemeteries, so we'll wait and discuss that further then.
Questions or comments? I think on that one, we should maybe send a thank you to Phil, particularly for his service over the past however many years that works out too, just looking after the cemeteries here on the island, and, and that we can go from there if that's okay with the group. I'm seeing some nodding, so I'll assume that that's okay. All right, 13-2 is Hospice of Charlotte, and that's CAO Rayner again.
Thank you, Madam Morse. This one's a quick one. It just came in from Hospice of Charlotte. This is, "Dear friends of Hospice, it is wonderful to be coming out of the haze that COVID-19 created, to visit friends and families, to attend weddings and hold funerals. Prior to COVID, funerals were more of a chore or a duty. Only now do we realize how important these gatherings are, expressing our grief and supporting families and friends. Hospice of Charlotte has endured the best we could throughout this time as we worked around restrictions and rules. Hospice has been there for the community for 38 years now, offering comfort and support to palliative clients and their family caregivers and loved ones. We do not receive any government funding, so we are requesting your financial help as we carry on with this special endeavor. Yours truly, Donna Bresnan."
Forward chair.
Counselor Green?
Yes, thank you. Is that group actually active here, or on the island, do we know?
I'm not aware. I'm guessing they're more active in St. Stephen. But maybe we could ask for some more information about what services they provide on Graham and Anne? I think that's what you were getting at there? So, do we want to follow up with them perhaps, and just see if they are providing services on the island, and then we can make our decision, maybe following that information? Okay. Moves us over to new business, which is 14-1, the March meeting. This is more of an information thing. Again, I am looking at moving our March meeting back a week, so it would be the week of, the week prior, which should make the date February 27th. It just takes it out of the March break week for anybody who has children in school, and I'm thinking particularly the staff, and that way they're not necessarily tied with trying to get the agenda out for the following week, so it will, that's what my plan is, barring any unforeseen circumstances, just for everybody's planning purposes, and we'll get the notice out as required ahead of that. Any concerns with doing that? Moving right along to approval to pay invoices from the General Operating Fund. We have Absolute Traffic Sign and Solutions for the traffic signs, $9,092.96, and we have one from Dutchman Contracting for the Market Pavilion, $4,600.
I'd make a motion that we pay these invoices of the General Operating Fund?
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I will second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I'm pretty sure I'm going to transpose numbers on this list, so just bear with me. So, approval to pay invoices from the General Capital Fund. These are all from Coastal Enterprises and all for ditching and brush cutting. So, for $1,903.25, for $5,908.70, for $1,914.75, $2,941.13, $5,192.25, $5,623.50, another one for $5,623.50, and finally, $2,872.13.
Make a motion that we pay the rest of the invoice.
You heard the motion from Counselor Layton. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Turner, question?
Recently stated, not one.
They, they came in on each individual invoice.
No, it's, yeah, it's too strange.
It was, it was mainly for the, for the ditching. The bush cutting came in after they completed so many lane kilometers of the, of the bushing, but for some reason, the ditching, they sent one at the end of every day, just with, with the hours worked, you know, who worked, how many hours they had the dump truck, if they had used the float truck to move the excavator, and it was very detailed, which, which was good to see, because it really helped Counselor Layton and I go through it and, and to verify it, so we're just not sure why they sent so many.
Okay, no problem.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18-1 is transfers. A motion to transfer $28,999.71 from the gas tax fund to the General Capital Fund. You heard the motion from Counselor Layton. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And then 18-2 is a motion to transfer $156,587.81 from the General Operating Fund to the General Capital Fund by electronic transfer.
I'd make a motion for that?
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19 is closed session. We have five items to discuss in closed session. Personnel for the building inspector, financials, the transfer station, property at the C and D site, Dark Harbor Pond, and cemetery. Motion for closed session?
Make a motion to go into closed session?
Heard the motion for Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. I'll recall this regular council meeting, the Village of Graham and Anne to order. We were in closed session to talk about five things, but given the hour, I'm looking for a motion to extend us by 10 minutes, just to make sure we get through all the motions we need to procedurally correctly.
I would make a motion that we extend the meeting by 10 minutes in order to go through all the closed session information.
You heard the motion from Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Green, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. From closed session, the first item was personnel for the building inspector.
Okay, I'd like to move that we direct staff to proceed with discussions with the RSC on the proposal for providing, oh, God, my penmanship, excuse me, excuse me, my penmanship, providing the local inspector issue has been resolved.
You heard the motion from Counsel-
Sorry about that.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Boyd, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-2, financial, the transfer station?
I'd make a motion to accept the Class A dredging material-
Nope, not that one. You're, you're up number three.
I've done that before.
You have, you're excited.
I would like to make a motion to purchase the 2005 International Packer truck for the total of $40,000, which includes the needed repairs.
You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Brown, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-3, property for the C and D site.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Class A dredging material from Northhead, based on Greenfield accepting conditions laid out by RCAO.
You heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Turner, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 19-4 was property at the Dark Harbor Pond. That was just a, a request to potentially do some sea urchin diving there, which we would have no problem with. 19-5 was cemeteries, and we are directing staff to organize a meeting with the Cemetery Association and include the Graham and Anne Archives in that meeting. Yes, is that, I think, what we came out with?
Yep.
Okay. Number 20 was seminars, there's nothing there, so our next regular council meeting will be on February 6th at 7:30 PM here at the Community Center. Thank you all for hanging with us tonight. It was a bit of a long one, but I think-
Make a motion to adjourn?
Heard the motion from Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Second? Seconded by Counselor Boyd. Thank you.